I'm not buying your people. You say, otherwise you're getting happy.
Well, sure.
Yeah.
Well, gosh.
And we are so someone.
Yeah. No, I mean, for me, see, maybe twenty two places in town.
It's good.
The property is.
We are. Well, we have. Yeah, be lonely. Yeah. Be Laura and that was my name, like, let's say the best place. It's just up.
I don't know.
Well, but it's not. Well, yeah.
Very cool.
I have to move this up on everyone.
Hey, how are you?
Kids, she's in the lawn.
Yeah. We all want to do less than the movies.
That was a little. I know. Menorah's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You see, you never know as long as. I forget. Yeah. We didn't make sure. But.
I'm sorry, I was.
It's worse. No. Yeah, we said.
Yeah. By the way.
Oh. There is.
Yeah.
It's good. Yeah, because now she is.
I think.
Wait, it's a. The phone. It's like. I'm. Everybody wants thing.
You have vision someone that's like.
And someone's really special.
I'm like, boy. So yes, and terrible.
Oh, a little bit of water. Stuff that's like we really know. Yeah. From the front, I see that he's. No. Still talk, bro. Still.
I suppose I give a student. I'm like, so come back.
Yeah.
I wish I could, man. You don't say, I was like, you, but I think. Those things.
They were actually, yeah, I'm sure.
So he doesn't run.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a.
I'm.
I'm talking to Chad.
It's.
Yeah. All the time, I just see the nature of it. Don't hear.
It's. Somewhere.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. Bunch of. Yeah.
I want to see you.
I get sleep with him.
Well, yeah. A lot of people that. So usually, sometimes someone, everybody, she bosses. I mean, it's the same for them. See if they bring that be a change.
Once I.
So I kind of have an idea what covering law. What we're already got. It's.
You need to. None of this meeting. You guys have parents.
She's.
Yes, you have that. Yeah, we're going to bring your.
Well. Thank you. Okay. Well.
Maybe they're more than half a year.
Yes. I'll see.
Yell. I'm. Say.
Say.
Yeah.
Feel the rest of the. No, gross. Smell lyrics, name of the head.
They're. Jim.
Yeah, she had a.
I see.
Yeah.
How many sister?
They.
I'm having some part of the. But starting to think that's why I say. I'm sure they probably have. Um.
Yes.
What do you? You saw that.
I just. That's. Um, I don't think so.
Yeah.
Oh, obviously, it's.
Um.
Yeah. Are all of you. No, I didn't think that. And that. So I'm like, as a Cory, so I'm in short.
Yes.
Maybe. Then he made something from one room. My.
I don't know.
Or. Always.
We do. Like, uh, the pre K she wants to. Um, call us and cancel. I've been back with her. Yeah. Yeah, no, she, yeah, but she lay all up in the air. She was doing nice.
But not. Which.
Yeah, they're showing, those were the ones that showed up that night. So, so then there was. Figure out something. And. And. Yeah. I would first, because that's the school. It wasn't the grass that. Turn this outside. It's more or less. Because we heard a lot of us still up. It's one.
Yeah. I don't. I just. Look.
Something. That changed. There's, I actually got a C E M P. That's the foundation.
I did all the day for. Venus. Yeah.
Maudia watches, but Maudia's. She was hearing, thinking more. Yeah, yeah. And he's. Yeah, there's a next slide. We're.
All from the.
Keep dancing.
I think.
Please.
Call the meeting of government. Education for two seasons. Twenty five people. All members are present. Part of life is. Into the black. I play with the league. They're gonna buy. But the. Say so here. And. Public. Which stands. One nation, one. In the. The. Against. The office of the new Pocahontas County Schools Superintendent. Doctor. Eight of G P M's. There I am, just so you please swear. Doctor Williams.
Let's go.
Thank you. Please repeat after me. I, Dr. Letha G. Williams, do solemnly swear.
I, Dr. Legal G. Williams, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And the Constitution of the State of West Virginia.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Superintendent of Pocahontas County Schools.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the Superintendent of Pocahontas County Schools.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
The best of my skill and judgment.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All of this.
Do you remember my phone? No. I don't know. She never gave me a charge. She's going. Saying so too.
Sarah.
She's. Not soon.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Doctor Williams. Pocahontas County. Yeah. Doesn't vote. Welcome to the community. Thank you. Item number two, general. Agenda approval of the minutes from the Board of Education meeting. July seventeen, two thousand and fifty five. Do I have a motion? Send it. Mr. Holmes made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Holmes worth seconded. Any additions or corrections to the minutes?
That's.
There are no. Lose the favor, think about saying that. Approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion? Send it.
Want to make a motion?
Ms. Holmes.
Worth seconded.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Search. I do. It's a yellow.
You go.
What's happened in all this? I go. Yes, we had added a service person of Lori Wayne as cook three at Remake Elementary Middle School.
Yeah. Just. I thought she was secretary. Secretary.
Yes.
I should.
Oh, yeah. Did we add everything to the. Same to the agenda?
Yes. We've been off here.
If we can't do them. Oh, your board says employment right here.
Yes.
Cook three, yes.
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 Twenty six school year, two hundred days.
Yeah. Anything? Okay.
Any elements?
No.
Oh, lose the favor, think about saying that. A few here. Delegations. Superintendent, report from special request.
I do have a report from you. Um, and there are. Um, Miss Campbell, pull some things up. I just wanted to give you an oversight of where we are in our accountability and in our performance from last year. So when the actual scorecard comes out this year, you know. So if we could pull up, the first thing that she's pulling up back here. Is the C T E of the. I'm a really dashboard. And what we are looking at. There. Is we're looking at Pocahontas County Schools. We're looking at your overall score. Brim County is ninety three. And we met the account, the really score. For each of these other indicators, the little red line is where we should be. And if we perform better than what the expectation was. So you can see that we are performing above in six eight in participation in our C T E programs, in concentrations. Um, an area that we might need to look a little bit on, uh, look at a little bit is our completers. We're just above the red line. We're in all the other areas, we're well above the red line. Here, work-based learning, we're below. The expectation was thirty two. And we have seventeen. And then performance assessment, we're above. And then we are below in our teacher endorsements. So we do not have all of our teachers endorsed in the C T E pathways. So the next one we're going to look at is our accountability dashboard. And the accountability dashboard tells us about performance on the twelve indicators for our school system. So if we look at the accountability dashboard, we have three areas of concern that are on watch. We have County Board operating procedures, special education, and universal pre K. And then over here, we have, we are on support for attendance. So the way the accountability system works is you're either fully accredited, you're on watch, you're on support, and then you're on intensive support, which is intervention. It's a state of emergency thing. So we're on yellow on three attendance. We've spoken about that. We have some attendance issues that we have to correct because we are on support for attendance. And then the final thing I wanted us to look at is our bound scorecard. It tells us how we're performing academically. Scroll it up. So on the bound scorecard, we have what's called academic achievement, academic progress, L learners, and student success. And student success is related to attendance and behavior in our school system. So if we look at our elementary schools. Maybe. Like. It'll bring up each of the schools and the subgroups and tell you how they're performing. So if we look at academic achievement, and that's how many students are achieving at proficiency levels. And E L A and math, for our subgroups white, socioeconomically disadvantaged, we are partially meet standards. For academic progress, which means those students are growing towards academic achievement. We have a blue for white and socioeconomically disadvantaged. If we go over here for E L A math and reading achievement for our students with disability, we are a does not meet standards. If we go over to the next section, which is student success, attendance, you can see there that we are also in the red in attendance and on behavior, we exceed standards. So we do not have a lot of behavior referrals that are documented in level three and level four. Any question? Oh, let's go to the high school.
So, so, so reds?
Red is not good.
Red's not good.
Red is, does not meet standard. Yellow is you partially met standard. Blue is you meant a standard and green is you exceeded the standard through going better than anticipated. So for our high school, if we look at them and we look per subgroup on academic achievements for E L A, our white subgroup, partially met standard. They did not meet standard in math. Proficiency, and that's on the SAT school day. The graduation rate is meet standard. And then on the five-year graduation rate, we're partially meet standard. For attendance at the high school, it's red in all subgroups, on track to graduate. And what on track to graduate means, a number of students by the end of tenth grade that have accumulated the appropriate amount of credits to graduate on top. We are meet standard. And then for post-secondary education, that's looking at your A P courses, that's looking at your college completion courses and the pass rate of those in your C T E completers. We are partially meet standards there. If we look at our socio-economic students or our special ed students, our socio-economically disadvantaged, we're red in all categories except for four-year graduation rate and on track to graduate for our high school. So that's kind of where all our schools are performing, and that's where the county is performing at this time. This report will come out again at the beginning of August, and I will update you if we make growth or progress from this, which was last year, to this year.
When you say last year, you meant, because that's.
That's the twenty twenty four. That's right.
Not the year we just finished.
Not the year just finished, the year before we just finished. Yes.
Oh, so you don't have, you don't have your numbers yet from this current year to make, to make this next. Yeah.
That'll be the next one we get in lots.
All right, okay. How long? Is all.
Anything else, Doctor Williams?
We're meeting.
Yeah.
I'm speaking.
That's.
But, uh, what's happening?
Just.
Those beings. I think that's it.
Sure. Thank you.
Those steps were telling, almost sort of, uh, sticking body wants for me to supply. Should do a lot of other factors in there. What about attendance? What was the evidence of attendance up there? We didn't do. Brand. Brand. Right there.
I agree with you. Nice.
I got some.
What? Somebody would need some good, get some blues. And we've got, we've got range improvement. We got.
Got. We've got some partial mastery. I think that, um, possibly your scores could be better this year. Um, but it wasn't all. We did have three yellows and we had some blues.
I want to start. I want to start looking at things as not what's wrong to begin. We. We need to start looking at the good things, good side of things, too. There's a lot, a lot of good that happened. We need to talk about it. We also need to know what's wrong.
I mean, you, if the thing's is good, you don't know what to hear about things. We need to bring up to word, but not hear about.
Ah, there you go. Yes.
Item number six, approval of the following consent financial report. Paying the vendor listing seventy four thousand eight hundred forty dollars and thirty eight cent. Payment of local government purchasing card eighty nine, one sixty one, ninety nine, June seventeenth, two thousand twenty five, employee payroll, two hundred eighty two thousand five seventy eight, thirty eight. Extra duty paid for the month of June, two thousand twenty five. Twenty four thousand nine forty one, seventy two, bank reconciliations for the month of May, two thousand. Adjustments. Do I have a. Say. Mr. Paul, make motion. Do I have a second? Mr. McNair, second. Any questions? Hearing none, all those favors think I'm saying I. Of characters. Under missile engines, approval of level up course amendments between political state university and Pocahontas County Schools. Do I have a motion? Then. The phone's made a motion. I have a second. We have a second to that. And that's number seven on the agenda. Anybody got any questions about number seven? Is this?
How would you answer that?
I was on that.
We just added it to the list. We already had.
The part. And it just.
We actually signed up for it already.
I mean, I haven't, they were enrolled. The other one and they actually get this approved.
They're. We found like his own relationship anyways.
Yeah.
We have a number of. How many students are talking? You got three?
Five, six.
Yeah.
Started at eight and a couple of those.
Yeah.
And they will have the option to do this online, too, that they should produce.
That's what.
And we'll get this, this is what we're talking about. We're.
And a couple, and we contacted. So they decided not to take it. Anyway. It's a day it's signed up and then they. And.
Virtual. Uh, instructor or is it?
Yes.
Now, there will be.
We're. Knocked up.
No, there is a.
Here in the, in the room within one of those.
Yeah. It's. Always.
Yeah. Right.
Any other questions? All those in favor, think about saying I. Here is number eight, discussion, review, and possible action on job description for assistant principal at P C H S. So I have a motion. Send it. Mr. McCall made a motion. I have a second.
Thank you.
Miss this phone worth a second. No. Can I ask for executive session in this? Not on a position. You, it's not a person. You, there's no word in, I don't think there's any word in the Bible where I can think that's. Um. We're going to discuss it. It's a position.
A little bit of.
Yeah. Let's see that. So. Because.
Okay. So when I looked at the position that was posted for assistant principal athletic director, it mainly had a job description that was an athletic director job description. After reviewing it and looking at the state of emergency where the high school is in that process and speaking with the principal, I really feel like that position needs to have a special ed supervision, needs to be a assistant principal supervisor of special education. So we have a targeted focus on one of the school's needs in the state of emergency. Um, and then maybe we look at posting the athletic director as a separate stipend position.
Okay.
If the board would.
That makes a lot, that makes a lot more sense. And we approved that a month ago now. I don't think we really questioned it. We just thought it would sound like a good idea, but since I've thought about it, I don't think it was such a good idea because we, how many applicants we have on it? You have any applicants?
We have three applicants. I asked Ms. Campbell to contact each of those and say we want to reevaluate the position and repost it, and we encourage all of them to reapply.
So we had three applicants and two. I'm.
We have the idea. The. As much work as.
Needs to do up there, and as much work as there is with an athletic director, I don't think, I've questioned this boss about several times. I initially took that position. I agree with this.
I agree.
In. Your athletic director is at least a high-time position. Yeah. If you do it correctly. If you do it. That's true. But you got to, all referees, you got to set everything up. It's a.
It's a job.
We can check the. We can. It's a law. We can repost the position. Assistant principal, uh, special.
It's supposed to be a citizen. I have.
No.
The athletic director could be a citizen.
That can be a citizen.
And the assistant principal will have to have the administrative degree. And I would like to post that with a specialization in special ed because that aligns with their needs at that school and helping them move forward on their progress towards the state of emergency in the. So two separate positions. Um, I can either post it, um, give you permission to divide those, post those, write those, or I can prepare the positions and change job description and read it back to you next morning for approval and then post it. And it's what I arrange with.
What'd you say, principal Campbell? What's your opinion here?
I may not agree with everything you said. I would like for Doctor Williams to be able to write the description and get it. Just because of time.
They're trying to say we can.
Post it. I don't know.
Are you saying that the special ed would be required or preferred or how did that?
Um, I probably want to prefer.
Um, some people have background without necessarily certification, but we're just limiting the pool a lot. And it's been, I mean, we've had good applicants. It's just that athletic director. Just take room in front of the. Things to be done.
Sure. After, after I get it written, we'll, we'll collaborate a little and see if it meets the needs.
Yeah.
And then we go get a motion and.
You guys would allow her to go ahead and post it.
We didn't. That's like. I make, we go ahead.
Had Doctor Williams to.
Create that two different position. You don't have to, you got to do. Those on the discussion. All that will be. Yeah. He's already gotten authority to mark. But this is administrator.
So we still have to go to each of the board meeting, because this is actually an administrator. And we put that in the last round, administrator, so we have to be, we have to vote on it.
Yes.
Cause he's standing.
I think he did it.
Okay. All those in favor, if I'm saying ayes. So you all understand what just happened? Well, we need you to understand Chris.
I didn't say what's happening, but I don't know that you don't.
No, we don't need a motion to change it because it says on your possible action. So we're good with that, and we want her to be able to post it as soon as possible.
Yes.
Yes.
Item number nine, the discussion, discussion and possible action on MOU for services with the. Dear, dear, uh, client. Do I have a motion? God, big motion, just hold on for a second, any discussion on the, what is? It's just extending her contract to the first of January, right?
Ms. Klein, you gonna be able to take care of your other division and this too?
It was a temporary.
To, to address, address that Superintendent Williams, uh, is it okay, President Grimes? Uh, yes, they, the State Department has me assigned, as you see, that MOU. Uh, two days a month as the official West Virginia Department of Education mentor to Dr. Williams. And then an additional via Pocahontas County Board of Education, twenty-five days between July one and, and January one, or December thirty-first. Uh, to provide support as I have been, and the same is true for Boone County. So I am no longer the itinerant or interim superintendent in Boone County. I'm now a support liaison, just like I was to Pocahontas County, so my role has shifted in the last couple of days. I was that itinerant over there for two and a half weeks, but, uh, I, I believe that I will be able to do both unless Superintendent Williams sees otherwise.
Think she will be asked.
You got any question? Well, I mean, to. I think it's great, I love Mrs. Klein, this is something we absolutely think need. Well, I mean, you know, we're talking about money here, I don't want to be devil's sin thinking, that's, I'm okay.
Like, she's sacred handful, she's supportive, she, I mean, she doesn't just say, she's not just our cheerleader, like, she does that, she helps us. Line policy to what we're doing, I mean, she, she. She has resources, she checks, we have a question, so she is invaluable.
All those in favor, if I'm saying aye. Number ten, discussion, review or action letterhead for official business of post county schools, do I have a motion? Then, if the phone's made a motion, I have a second.
So in your packets, you have, um, letterhead. Part of your, part of the state of emergency and work in this time of the Board of Education office is that we do not have official letterheads when we are doing official business. So I wanted to design something that brands the school day period that is very official, very clean. Um, so I have a few examples there for you to choose from. I think I have four in here. The differences are, the first one has the, um, Pocahontas High School's, um, description, our address, the board members. On the left-hand side, and then our logo on the right-hand side, has a thin line. The next one, this one, has a more profound line, it has the logo, the information switched. Then we have, uh, I think this is, then we have one with a thinner line. So we have various lines, various, uh, placement of our logo. Any of these is fine with me, we just need to have some potential, and I can change anything on to these.
Do you want to do your last option? Yeah, this is yours.
This is yours, this is number.
My decision.
Tell us which one.
Highlight is this one, okay.
That's this one?
Yes. Okay, that will be the. That will be our official letterhead, so what this means is that any contract sent, signs, we think that it's an official representation of the Board of Education. Will only be on this letterhead, if it's not on this letterhead, then it is not beneficially approved to be put on later. Um, when I do MOUs, this will be part of it, we have letters to parents, this will be part of it. Um, and then we will work on the letterhead for each school to reflect a similar design to ours. So that parents know their city, uh, kids, communication.
You all want to see the letterhead that we picked.
Which I see.
Is it more than a season, yes? You'll see it. All those in favor, if I'm saying aye. Number eleven, discussion, review and action of agenda.
For.
Do I have a motion? Make a run out of. The phone for a second.
Okay, so that is item eleven in your circuits. And. Looking at our agenda, I thought that I wanted to have a couple of different sections and, uh, align it with the school board format, we've got, uh, board blocks. So call the meeting to order, I would like to add school improvements, updates as number five. And throughout the year, I would like to have our schools present out more to the board about academics at this school, how they're using data at this school, and how they're progressing. Um, we have to have one official Evans Academy meeting each year, but we actually give three benchmarks, we give one at the beginning of the year, one at the middle of the year, and then we have our assessment at the end of the year. That is a great time to have each of our schools report out about the work they're doing and how they are progressing student achievements. And how they're removing that accountability mark on our dashboard, and that gives us the things to celebrate.
Right, right, right.
And then, um, I did want to talk about the personnel agenda. Um, I would like to see us consistently have all the vacancies that are posted on there, and we work to strike them out if we don't have anybody apply. And with the new, uh. Changes or notifications about fingerprints and background checks, if we don't have that back on the phone, we will say pending the return of their background check. So I also have a copy of what that agenda would look like, then we would divvy that up into professional recommendations, service recommendations, and extracurricular recommendations. And then if there's any other recommendations, so we would have four parts to the personnel agenda. And it would be, um, like under professional recommendations, we would have resignations, employment, so we would have who resigns and employment. And then keep track of their job numbers and how many times that we are posting something. Uh, it just makes it easier to manage horrific transfer season and easier to keep up with how many times we have a job that's vacant. Yes, everybody's informed.
I didn't notice a pool for one minute on the agenda, I thought that was a fellow.
That was normal.
Oh, on this agenda, okay, we need, I forgot the component, so I will add that as a, there's also approval of the agenda.
You go ahead there.
Yes. Okay, I will listen, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, you go ahead. Cause we, you might want to add a name to the agenda.
Yeah, it's a cool idea. You know, and I, I was in the. And I was listening on the other day, and they were talking about personnel management. And they, their company started with eggs in retirement interviews.
To their long-term employees that been there for.
And, and their guys at this company. Found a lot of information about how to retain employees from those eggs in interviews. And maybe kind of cool, yeah, break that into.
I thought I had one here, though, whatever, no, I missed them. So. So with the personnel agenda, as long as you have the position listed and you have the, uh, position code. You can walk in personnel items right up to the beginning of the meeting and add those in there. And that allows us a little bit more freedom when somebody gets an interview late, that we can have it before the, and get a market, and approve. So that they're hired, especially when we are facing retention problems with our staff.
All those in favor, if I'm saying ayes. We'll see ya. Number twelve, discussion and actions regarding TSDO monitoring from share your soul for. Prior. For two hundred fifty dollars a day not to exceed thirty-nine point six days, do I have a motion? Make a motion, do I have a second? I've been having this for a while, this one, so I can't think. Any questions on number twelve? I was curious why thirty-nine point six?
Because when you're, um, providing services, there is a ten thousand dollar threshold. So we have to stay under that, or it requires us to rebit up that position. So we are, uh, making sure that we are following policy eighty-two hundred and saying within those guidelines.
All those in favor, if I'm saying aye. Discussion or review of the addition of girls volleyball for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, do I have a motion? Call play motion, do I have a second? Mr. McNair, second, any discussion?
Again, this week, I wanted to provide, provide just some information on that. Okay. So, um, I have spoken to the principal of the high school and talked about the position. Some key indicators that I wanted to have information from the board tonight is, um, do we have uniforms, do we have funding? Do we have a place for the girls to participate? How are we transporting them, and do we have a community league or a middle school team that is feeding into those programs? Um, I think those are all things that, to consider when you're considering this volleyball position. It may be, and the board obviously can make this decision, is it that you want to, um, allow them to start fundraising? And recruiting for a position to start next year and get a plan together to propose to the board and table having a volleyball team this year? Um, so that all of those questions can be answered, and we can live with the policy of what we did when we introduced it. Or if you want to approve it, they won't have a place to practice because the gym floor is not, um, finished at this point in time. And we would really have to think about transportation and how that occurs, it's my understanding from talking to the other directors. That, uh, sometimes we have a bus shortage in, uh, for athletic positions. So there's a whole bunch of things you have to take into consideration when you are thinking about this position. The main thing being capacity and sustainability, you don't want to have it for one year, you want to build it up. And have a program that is successful and lasts for many years and has the background, been done to do that.
Any, don't check. If I count if we add our nice and even girls and boys. Does anybody check to see if we add one year, if we have to add one?
If you, if you cannot have, um, more boy sports, then more boy opportunities, girl opportunities.
And we can have more girl opportunities.
Well, it's, it's a little different, it's a tiny bit different, uh, because there's some, this, yes. We would not be in trouble as we have in a girl's sport.
So a decision about the girls volleyball to force us.
And. But in four, it could, it could lay the framework, though, that's why I was telling you that it is not a sport at either of your middle schools. So if you start at the high school, it could lay the framework to start that sport at the middle states. So that's something you have to take in consideration, because you do want to have a feeder program into this program, so you have to think about it to be successful. So you have to think about all those things, now there is an option. That should be, if there's a rec league, they can start anticipating directly to build some capacity. And over this year, as they start to build that capacity indirectly in the community, if they really are supporting this, they support that, and then that kind of funnels into this.
Good thing on the pros side, let's look at this on pros too, I want to think about the good things about this too, volleyball's good, it's another opportunity for you to get exercise. I mean.
Are you guys volleyball people, is that why you're here, can you talk to us about this? Let's hear your old.
So the way I look at it with the time. Is football players, you can have up to thirty and forty on the field. With cheerleading, only thirteen of those girls can compete at, at competition level, they can have, I think, up to twenty on the, on the field. At the games and stuff, when you look at the grandparents, our girls don't have a lot of choices at the high school when it comes down to, I have a lot of girls that's gonna want to come out and play for volleyball. Due to the factor of, well, they've been either turned off the team, like with cheer, that's the only other option, they're not cheerleaders, they're, they're just. They don't have that option when it comes to cheer or basketball, basketball, there's so many girls that they have tryouts every year. You know, I mean, when it comes to that. And I did want to share with you, Dr. Williams, you and I talked, but also you asked about some preliminary stuff that they have done. And they brought that, and I just looked at the list, you know, how to sign them. Um, they do have, uh, documentation of the folks that attended that meeting, who's interested, what they're willing to do. Um, they also have, I looked at the list. And a lot of times people will say, well, how many cheerleaders are we gonna use to volleyball? How many soccer players are we gonna use to volleyball? Actually, the folks that signed up, it might be one kid from each of those sports. That were currently interested when they did the interest meeting in. When they saw, when they had interest, I mean, every one of the parents was a hundred percent okay when they were there for the uniforms. Baseball, they pay for their uniforms so they can get their names on the back, they get them, uh, yeah, for junior and senior. Kind of sucks because you, you're only gonna give it as like two years, but our freshmen and sophomores, they get it, they keep it throughout season, throughout every, all their years playing. And so there's, and same football, they give their jerseys to their players at the end of their senior year. So, I mean, we just, in return, they pay for theirs and they get, keep it. And the only way, only way that ever someone get new is if they don't fit their uniform, or something happens immediately, they have to have. Cut off them, in that case, that would be on us to pay for.
Football is listed as a girl and boys both sport.
Yes, but how many girls do you know go out for football every year?
I remember one.
Oh, so one, however many years I went out for football.
We did reach out to the SSAC about the title, and Dr. Williams just correct on that, and we don't have to have. Another sport, because I had the same question, like, do we got to find another sport for voiding that?
No, how much is it gonna cost the board then? Yeah, all these sports, of her, girl softball, boys baseball, they all started out saying, we're gonna take care of it, and then two or three years down the road, we started taking care of it because.
I have coaches for, for Pocahontas High School since two thousand seventeen, and I've only been paid one year, that is not why I'm here.
Ain't no coaches here because.
Yeah, no, no. Perfectly fine with volunteering my time for all of it, I don't expect.
Question to the piece of all the main is, what happens to the volleyball that we have several years ago?
Honestly, I don't know, that was right after, I mean. I think it came down to the coach just. Yeah, I was gonna say, I think Ruth just went, and then after that, they're, they didn't have a way to take over. And then she, when she left, so.
Well, and that's why I brought up from the start, my sustainability, and I think they're doing a lot of work, and have done a lot of work, and they have been at, I mean. As long as I've been at the high school, this ask has come. But it's just been three years, so I do think that. The fundraising part ahead of time, I'm worried about, you know, the space.
And you worked out the two hundred and sixty-seven kids.
Yeah. I mean, as of right now, I'm.
One of the private schools, you know, I forget several years ago, I was going up, one of them had ninety-seven kids, and I played all of them at high, played the sport.
Well, and the, the positive side is, I, there's students on this list that do not participate in any of their sports. It would bring more kids into.
Things like, where's our money person at? Bus, yeah, okay, all right, see you.
How are, how are you gonna get the game, how are you gonna throw change?
Game slides, our parents are all willing to transport, all private transportation won't ask for any transport.
No, besides, baseball does it, soccer does it, I mean.
I'm sorry, in the long run, it's not worth it to bring any sport besides football to take a bus, you don't have enough kids even fill a bus.
So in my eyes, I'm sorry, it comes down to Little League and any other sport. You're very struggling to them, why can't they drag you to a house sport, or buy the rounds, you know, we do that with softball.
We have to have permission slips, what covers?
I know that.
With education, man.
I know that any other time you have to have, every parent that's planning on transporting a child has to have the insurance, insurance and all that. And then they have a list of who is allowed to ride with.
We have to.
I'm sure you all take care of all of that transportation, that, that, that all it takes is one disgruntled parent to bow a ball suit on equal. And that's, and we've run the bus for every, or we have.
Yeah, now, so you're going for football, you go.
Well, we have had that problem even on the softball level and baseball level. But, I mean, for the most part, when you say, I'm sorry, okay, unless you can show us a reason for taking a bus for only sixteen kids, we've not had, I mean, I've not had that problem since two thousand seventeen with anybody. I mean, I've had parents, it's like, oh, well, I can't, well, okay, then we've had other parents and me being one of them, I'm also a parent myself. Last year, I, I, I had to take my tommy everywhere because I was having kids with, to softball games. Uh, there's plenty of parents that's willing to, hey, you're picking wrong with me, don't worry about even going, if you can't hit, it's fine.
Mr. Gibson, I believe you knew you were going to get this, so I was starting here now, how are we going to floor the high school? And when they start, they start taking it out, you probably, it's going to be yesterday.
Why do they have, when they're going?
Have you ever heard to get the delivery around the first part of September, have the, uh, October, mid-October? That's what I, we don't play basketball games.
Yeah. I mean, that would.
I knew this was coming, that's why I had to everything my first board because I knew what was going to happen about that, can't breathe, remember? Yeah.
The theme on the table is, um, do you want to approve the volleyball team? And you can post for a dollar coach? Say you approve the, you approve the volleyball sports team for a dollar, a dollar coach, and then I can post a dollar spend? Or you would like to table that, getting the work on building more capacity? That, those are the two decisions about that were, I mean, work out the stuff about those. And then it will be with the responsibility of the principal and the responsibility of the coaches to work out the training schedule and where they will practice, that's their responsibility.
So I have talked to people about that, and we can, um, the middle, Green Bay Middle School, it's a two percent, but it's going to use her gym because they have it in there. And we have talked to the wellness center in there, okay, with us, he isn't in there, so, so practice, so. Because my way of looking at it, we have girls that's in Green Bay, we have girls that's in Marlins, and it's not fair to come down here every day to our Green Bay kids. I want a fifty-fifty every day. And my plan is just to apply for the head coach and hire him as head coach.
So that, that will be, if, if it is approved tonight, those management responsibilities will fall on the shoulders of the principal to manage that. That is something that she will have to take care of with the coaches and the athletic director once we get that posted and hired, so.
Hey, just have, now something.
One other thing, because fall and half days, and I was so excited, but I haven't seen one of the funds of women's.
No, not yet, because I didn't know what to do with that, I have.
You know they're blocking the same.
No, no, they're not, because when I'm.
So let's table this. Okay. Yeah, for less than we let this stuff.
Well, so, yeah, we know, we've.
We paid it because next meeting, not, not meeting, that, you got.
We can talk about the volleyball, but about, we'll talk about that other stuff. We can say.
Yeah, yeah, well, we can go ahead and vote, this is what we want to do. You're studying, what are you studying?
Well, I mean, I just think there's too much, right now, and I'm, I am trying no harder to say yes and look at all the positive things, but I, I just think there's too many gray areas right now, ladies, we, we don't have a gym, we, 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 we.
The way that we're, we planned on having no home games.
We don't even have an athletic director.
Well.
Rassle this thing now.
Our coach, our, I talked to other schools that was willing to let us just do all the way games this year, so because of this reason, we're gender aware. That was our plans, and we have talked, we, me and Chastity have talked, and C M Tigers Valley would do what they did for sectionals for the boys this year. And us hold, host games there and do fifty-fifty with that own money, if that's what they would like to do. Just so we can have what could be considered a home game once. I mean.
It's hard, maybe, because like you said, the girls play volleyball, ninety percent of them do nothing else, I don't know about those sports.
Well, I've been doing the fresh ones that's coming up, but I'm also.
My worry today, table it until next year, is we've got the hopes of all these girls up, we've been doing this for months. And they're thinking about this, they're wanting this so badly. And if we table it till next year, we're going to lose half of these girls because they're going to say they want to live through it two weeks. Right, but I'm saying, if we, if we say.
Can't table for, till the next meeting?
If we say, okay, we're not doing this year, we're going to grow and develop, and then next year with the possibility, then we're going to lose half these girls because they're going to say, well, you said it was going to happen this year, and it didn't happen, so it's not going to happen this year, and we're not even going to worry about it. That's my worry.
The word this calls, I don't know who's calling this, but as a board, we were clueless until it showed up on last board meetings agenda.
That's a news call. No one has ever approached the board to approve volleyball.
Yeah. Like, well, Dr. Williams and I talked about that, actually, because there is, should be a process in place. And whether or not, like, I don't think anybody knew what that process was, because they started, they came, we said, you can have an interest meeting, you know? And then it was put to the agenda, but we didn't have any guidance from the central, well, from the superintendent to say, you have to present this to the board first and then do these things, you know what I mean? So that's more of a process.
I love that.
As Dr. Williams said, you kind of did this backwards, but.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
Trying to do it backwards, and trying to get the ducks in the row to say, here's our, here's the presentation, can we do this? So if you want to.
That's, that's, that's the same law, because it's some, it popped, we got a big list in the file, and it popped up in the gym.
And we've put it on the list for the, the, added it to the things that there I'd be, because you have to do individual fundraisers.
Yeah.
So those things, that list hasn't been approved yet, but we have added all those things, so.
We, we, we approved this, what tie does this, do we have to reapprove it next year?
You could eliminate.
I'm.
Let's do it.
For it.
Yes.
In the first.
Sarah, now just, don't this money have to be run through the, of the high school sport?
As, as of right now, with that money, it's, I mean, it was just as simple as it was on Saturday, and then I left on Monday. I have a lock at my house, I'll bring, I'm taking it to the school as soon as Ken gets there. But I also have multiple businesses in this county that is willing, it's just as simple as signing a check. I have checks that's willing to go to the school. Uh, it's just, if it's approved, great, then they all go to the school, if it's not approved, terrible, um, we're out.
That's not fundraising, that's.
No, that's just donations and everything that has been given to us. There are multiple donations.
But for one?
Do it for one year, you say?
You can go for one year, uh, yeah, you can add that to the, you make that motion. That we vote on, discussion or review, so we could add that to the agenda and say we can vote on for a one year. And all the way games, all parent funding, all, everything.
For one year.
For one year, that's what we're going to vote, yes.
Try.
Um.
Mr. Van, make the motion.
I have a second.
Mrs. Holmes, for a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Was it said, the norm, just heard the twenty-five, twenty-six.
We approved it for one year to see how it goes.
Okay.
And it's up for you to get with Mrs. Campbell and get everything set up.
Please make sure, got everyone.
And so you have a, you, well, I just got to go to the, they all.
Um, I'm going to just start, like, since two thousand and sixteen, yeah, I've been approved multiple every year besides twenty-two and twenty-three that I've been coached. Due to.
If there's nothing else I would suggest, which Dr. Williams brought up, please try to get, please try to get a rec league, please try to get the, the middle school.
Right.
If you're going to do this.
Right.
Got to do it. I mean, I'm very excited.
I know, I know.
Okay, number fourteen, approval of altercation of contract between Julie Dunlap and Pocahontas County Board of Education effective July the first, two thousand twenty-five, do I have a motion? Mr. Coleman, play the motion, do I have a second? Mr. Van, make a second, that.
I'm going to laugh, he, and he has one.
Yeah.
What, what group that is?
We're the same.
Don't sound, don't sound very loud, only in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Approval of mutual altercation of contract between Steph.
Also.
Of contract between Ju, uh, between Steph.
At school, more.
At school, Pocahontas County. Effective June the first, two thousand twenty-five, do I have a motion that used to give that, but we forgot, no, actually. Do I have a second? So, so this is for Mrs. Stephanie Byrne, yes, yeah. Any discussion?
Uh, for Stephanie, Ms. Burns, yes. She will, she is not going to be in a director's position, she is going to be a coordinator's position. Okay, and she will be under, directly under me as the superintendent, so my certification will be, yes, she will not be, she doesn't. That's a coordinator, we're extending her days and as broadening her field. She, um, was a two-twenty contract, she's going to be a two-sixty-one, and she's going to be in a federal program title, two, title four, five, step seventy, elementary curriculum and secondary textbook.
Okay.
Um, we just didn't have that consistency and that breadth, pervasiveness, plus systemic change throughout the district, and she's going to be over that for us.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Motion carries.
Approval of contract from Lisa Hart and the Pocahontas County Board of Education for speech pathology services virtually oriented person for July the first, two thousand twenty-five, and June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. Do I have a second?
So they, Mr. Coleman, make a motion, I have a second. Second, this is.
And I'm going to, you're. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Okay, on number seventeen is an approval of service and professional personnel. Seventeen.
Okay, so approval of service and professional personnel. Um, Green Bay Elementary Middle School, request transfer, Sarah Brown from Teacher, kindergarten to teach us.
Okay. I want to do, we got that now.
Um, okay. Green Bay Elementary Middle, retirement Renee D. Hill as kindergarten aide at Green Bay Elementary Middle School due to retirement effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Employment, Lori Wayne as cook three at Green Bay Elementary Middle School for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for two hundred days and shall be two hundred days each year thereafter. Marlinson Elementary School, Tracy. Mama. Mama. As custodian four at Marlinson Elementary effective July one, twenty twenty-five for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for two hundred and sixty-one days and shall be two hundred and sixty-one days each year thereafter. Employment of Olivia Kessling as ECAT Special Education Classroom Bus Agent from Marlinson Elementary School effective for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for two hundred days and shall be two hundred days each year thereafter. Pocahontas County High School, Allison. Stoss.
Zachary.
Zachary, as teacher of art at Pocahontas County High School effective for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year for two hundred days and shall be two hundred days each year thereafter. Employment of Andrew Canover as custodian of three at Pocahontas County High School effective July one, twenty twenty-five for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year and two hundred and twenty days and shall be two hundred and twenty days each year thereafter. Request transfer of Darlene Arbegaz from teacher of special education multi-categorical autism to teacher of CTE business management at Pocahontas County High School for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year and two hundred days, for two hundred days and shall be two hundred days each year thereafter. Pocahontas County, do we want to do the next section? Yes, read it all. Pocahontas County Schools creation of a position Director of Personnel Technology, Pocahontas County Schools creation of a position Director of Personnel Technology and Student Services. Employment of Andrew Taylor as school bus operator for the active run effective for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year at daily rate of pay for actual days work prior to the school calendar plus, year plus sixty dollars per day based on a hundred and eighty days of operation for days that activity runs are required. Employment substitute teacher for Pocahontas County Schools at state minimum professional salary for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, Sherry Radcliffe, Diane Nelson, Greg Mor, Morgan. Employment substitute agent for Pocahontas County Schools at state minimum service salary for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, Sherry Radcliffe and Renee, Renee D. Hill. Employment substitute bus driver for Pocahontas County Schools at the state minimum service salary for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, Scott Kelly. Employment substitute cook for Pocahontas County Schools at the state minimum service salary for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, Sherry Radcliffe. Employment substitute custo, custodian for Pocahontas County Schools at the state minimum service salary for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, Sherry Radcliffe, Diane Bennett, Mark Walson. Employment substitute secretary accountant for Pocahontas County Schools at a state service, minimum service salary for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, Sherry Radcliffe.
Any question?
Oh, there's a bunch of questions. We already have, what's going on with the Green Bay, we're ready for the case, what's we do, about, we are last week.
We just want to, so we need to post for office job, right? Okay. Um, the custodian, you'd like to have certain tasks, or? Okay. Um. Personnel and Technology Director. Brenna. Brenna Valley, Brenna Vasquez.
That is a position that we are creating because of the re-alignment of Miss Shiplet, produce and firms.
Okay, so.
It's an additional director's position at county office, it will be a director of personnel. They will take technology off of Miss Shiplet's plate as well. Um, and this will allow our special education director to focus in special ed, which is an area concerning me for us.
So, okay, so. So this is a real, okay.
That's part of the re-alignment for those mutual agreements that you approved earlier.
Okay, so. Our anti, who is it, Ms. Haynes, what's, what, what do you think about the, the anti program?
Uh, I mean, you guys know I feel, um, that we talked about, uh, obviously, from my standpoint, I love to lead that department. I understand why Dr. Williams has made the decision she's made, um. You know, that's my feeling, you know, I'm a team player, so where I need to land, I will land. Um, but, but I've talked to you guys in the past about how I dream is to lead that department, so of course, I'm a bit heartbroken that that's not in my cards.
So this is, this, you're not eligible for that.
No, sir.
This sucks because, I mean, she, she are, she are.
If the real problem of Miss Haynes will be over all of the front end and her skills will definitely be utilized. We're looking at making, um, our other TSS over the backend management, which is the next. But in order to be a director, you need an, an industry with a great. And that's not to say that sometime in the future that we see.
And that's not to say that sometime in the future that Miss Hammond's will not have a director's, her administrative certificate and will not be able or eligible to lead a director's position. It's just that we, all directors need to have an administrative degree. Especially when personnel is going to be.
Can't we start with, no, okay, all right, okay, so you're right. Can we? Can we not do with? Having Miss Hammond's be a. Barnes is going to be a. Can you feel that would not be appropriate?
She is already classified as a TSS, which is two hundred and sixty-one days, which is the exact to you.
Well, could we make her a board?
She worked underneath what Ms. Barnes is.
That's why I was like, oh, the technology. Act, I think. Got the other view and. And.
So if we tabled this position, well, we really need to go back and look at the other, the new mutual agreements because they're all contingent upon each other.
How can we table this position? I mean, all the technology of it. And great extension.
How is it now, Miss Shiplet, how is, what's, what's going on with my, what's?
Wait, what? I've been doing.
Yes, ma'am.
I've, I've been doing child nutrition attendance technology passing away the secondary, she comes over there, goes, et cetera, et cetera.
I've been, we're been, okay. So what we want, what?
I'm a nutrition.
Is to make another director with the IT.
And personnel.
And personnel, IT and personnel.
And the reason for that is, uh, Ms. Burns will be directly under me because she doesn't have an administrative certificate. So personnel, I'm going to have somebody that works personnel and also does technology. Technology is a broad, because I'm a big technology director. There's a tech and then there's the net. So somebody needs to work on the front end management, which means that they work with LEVS, they work with integration of technology, they work with training teachers and staff, and then somebody works with the back end, which is the wiring that we have, which is the types of cameras that we have. It's the installation, it's the hardware fixing. So they're kind of, it's, it's a long, hard task. But with our speeding support for attendance, we need a staff, we have Ms. Dunlap focused in worse of it. She is focused in on moving us from support to compliance.
Okay, so do you, so Ms. Dunlap, that's your, that you're comfortable, yeah, but since you come into the board office, a safer place than Lince is my personal feeling. And you can't do that, I think.
That's why. The best I can do, which is, I'm being too many. And this alignment allows me to, I'm just going to watch your, and I saw this part of my CTE, and she was, she does, we, the records, that's, I gave that. As well as counselors and students.
Can we, Ms. Hammond, can we afford? For record, this is.
Two.
Ah.
We still have Chris.
Yeah, this is the addition, because.
Yeah, so here's what we're looking at. Mrs. Shiplet of, and Mrs. Dunlap had multiple, uh, accountability cats. We are, um, in a state of emergency over the high school. Part of that is special ed, but when we look at special ed across the county, special ed is not where it needs to be. We had a monitoring, we have not received those reports back. So we need to be able to focus in on special ed and make sure we have a cohesive plan to move our county forward. In order to do that for the vacant director's position, we need to take, we need to narrow that focus so that all those life things that now linked together are in one position. Then looking at our attendance, which is another accountability indicator that we are on support, which means the next one is intensive support, just like the first special ed. We pulled that out to narrow the focus of Mrs. Dunlap. So in pulling those out, had to align those positions somewhere else. Part of the superintendent's job is, was personnel director. But if I'm going to take on all the divisions and to help Mrs. Burns supervise, then the technology, which is a huge compliance thing, which has also contributed to the state of emergency.
Right.
At the high school, needs to be a position and this, and a, uh, personnel director. And that's what's in here aligned. Now, we cannot create too many positions in the board office just because of the way this, the system works. When it be a director, you really need to have your administrative certificate.
I, I, I don't have a problem with that. I, I just.
Okay, so can we pay for this? Can we pay for what?
Uh, Ms. Hammond?
We're adding one director's job and we do have the amount of funds for this position. We are not in any way.
Be over budget.
Well, we are going to be fine with that, I understand. It is not, because the whole realignment has to go down this re-alignment. So if we don't realign and post this position and we don't realign Mrs. Dunlap's position and we don't realign Ms. Burns' position and shift things around. This part of our, uh, the work that Ms. Klein has been working on is that, um, in the list of duties, there's not clear indication, and that was part of the school's complaints, is that nobody knew who to talk to at the central office and who's in charge of what. This realignment clearly designates who's in charge and who you contact and will allow us to better support our schools and better support our students in achievements. So we have to have these clear pods, even in technology, even though Ms. Hammond's is not going to be the director of technology, she is going to be the front end manager of technology. There'll be somebody, the back end manager of technology. So that's clarified, because I don't think that that, I think that we didn't have that lined out as well as we could have.
All right, let's go on this, we've discussed it enough.
So hope with your heart, Sam.
We're, yeah.
This, this ship, and you guys are all along and good with this mission.
Yes.
This is what you want, this is what.
Yes, we, we do need, need help here.
All right.
All those in favor, she about saying aye. Motion carries.
Session discussing student.
This, the student matter. Uh, Mr. McNabb has made a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Does he call the second, that's, all those in favor, she about saying aye. Executive statement, add seven, well, no decision will be made, Kim. This is only. This is only.